Thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to call our special meeting or discussion meeting. Item number two, which is, consider taking the action necessary regarding passage of northens banning and amisment in lot one with a West Fulton addition at the northeast corner of West Fulton Street, the Wilkins Street. And I guess, home on 490 West Fulton was permitted in construction in 2005. A portion of the home was constructed on City Right Way. That's cool. The owner now is our seller, but all the structures, building apartment is not allowed, seller, property will not process this sale. Staff has confirmed interior and we will counsel both suggest a ban of right away from property issue. Is there anybody here who would speak on? Will this slide go on? If we're talking about half a house?
Yes.
Because I've done with all the terms as Van Osten came in, tell me how this happened?
Okay, I'm the purchaser, so.
Bolton and Wilkins, the corner.
It's, yeah. This is where the house is, this is the second house that's been in property. The previous house had been on that same place.
I'll make a motion that we defer to variance, or defer to any variance.
Have a little debate?
Yeah.
In further discussion?
Do we have to get rid of the old piece on the property someday?
Someday.
What?
Someday.
Someday? All right, you take it.
Well, hopefully in the future, we won't have that. Further discussion? How many were you on hand?
So could that little blue trailer, could that end up in a box?
The green thing on my car.
The commercial variance is not. Put a pole on that area. Item three, discussion regarding fiscal year 2019, 2020, City of Van Osten, general enterprise fund budget.
This is, this is not good.
Yeah, that's what I told you. This isn't going to stop at any time.
Wish I would have said, it's like it didn't even happen.
We just walk out?
So where are we, Chalkover?
City, for one minute, it's okay, you're gonna have to run one, right?
There's two of us. Oh, one. You should read, lose yourself. That's okay, my husband's coming.
Okay, let's focus our attention. Take control, Mr. Mayor, take control. First, I want to thank the staff. They worked really hard and put in a lot of work. Division head was involved in handling, because you're not putting it into a product package. We tried to do it about two, three times and help ask for, you know, be trying to formulate your questions if you had. So, hey, I'm very proud of the work they did and it came out really good. And I'll tell you that Judy was worried that she was going first, and I, well, there's no reason to worry. We let you go first because you're the one that they wanted to pick on the most. That kept her awake, I think, for some of it. We've got a PowerPoint that kind of goes with this. I put it right there. Stations, so the new standing, who's people win, the three last questions, we do a lot of people to do it. Each one of them, they're left with their line items on their budgets, and having a question, you know, and that's the time they're asked. Fair enough? Again, so I want to speak to the general fund, just to provide kind of a high level overview of 30,000 square foot, first, 30,000 foot level view of what the budget is and speak to the highlights of what's really happening in Van Osten. Somebody matched the white foot on the accelerator, and it's part of our 2019 through 2020 budget. So, it's important, we kind of go back and look at some work that led in, I did earlier in the year as we're starting to forecast that our future is going to look like as a city. The future is coming to us right now. So, lot development, we predicted about 290 lots, and I think we're there, are we not?
We're at 490.
Yeah, just slightly over that number. So, we had 490 lots developed in this fiscal year. We expected that to be 290. We forecast 660 in 2020, but I will tell you that as of Friday, three developers dropped off, planted, these are already planted, planted, for 544 homes on Friday, planning. So, what's that mean to us? Well, it means it's alive. You know, we're starting to see that happen throughout our community. That translates into new streets of revenue and greater demands on our city staff and other services that we provide. So, that's 660, we're already at 544, and if I'm not wrong, we haven't reached that calendar of year yet, so it's a promise. We anticipate 238 of those homes will be listed sometime in this accounting year that we're talking about. So, and for the next few years, we're going to see a pretty rapid incline as we, these developers start to build some homes. So, what's that mean? Well, it means our general fund had a very healthy bit, delivered a lot of million dollars in the previous year. Where did that come from? Well, with all that development, you just saw it, let me back it up here, right there, whoops. Our building permits, with all that infrastructure increases our revenue $225,000. The development fees that are paid by our developers increased our revenue $258,000, and our property taxes went up $224,200. How does that happen? Well, the property taxes, 50% of that increase came through increased valuation on existing properties, and the other 50% came through new build, and Daniel's going to speak to the specifics on that. Also contained in that general fund budget was a new ordinance that will be before you in September, it's called the Community Services Fee. That's a fee that the best way we all have already agreed to, $1,250 per house, that paid into that community services fund that we can use to help develop our future parks, maintain our current parks, make community improvements to our city. So, if you look at that, that's about 75% of our increase came from those areas. We never got that quite corrected on that slide, our expenses. Our expenses rose proportionally to this new revenue stream as permitting goes up, you know, some of the expenses associated with permitting, development, fees go up, some of the expenses associated with that. Our budget, the general fund this year, though, will add a community development and planning target, and we need a regational structure, it's all there, space for the maintenance board, and give you a job description. That's a city player, if you will, that has some additional responsibilities. That's something that as a city leader, we need to narrow this, it's a dramatic pace, but it's getting difficult to keep up with what's happening here. This general fund also provides second half pay increases to the fire department that we agreed to last year. It provides a step increase for our police department, it provides a detective, and what else am I missing for police? Anything else?
One vehicle.
Okay, one vehicle. It provides revenue in the budget right now for parks of $63,000, it's actually a bit more than $93,000. A portion of that is part of new truck for the parks and recreation department, and while here, the door fell off their truck today, so it's time to get a new truck. So, we can buy shade cutters over several, we have in the city. It provides the next level of engineering for downtown park, there's $85,000 in the funds, so we can send out to an engineer and get set plans run, so we can start to come up and plan the funding. And it provides a street repair, street repair care as a potable machine, and a new public works vehicle. City tax rate through all of this goes down from .595932 to .584456. So, strong up surgery revenue, provides some things that we need to buy here, and our tax rate goes down. That's consistent with what's happening with the county. I think there's a media newspaper article that was in our local newspaper, county is reducing their tax rate, and so is the ISB, they're reducing their tax rate eight cents per unit of value. So, with that, I'll hand it up to the control.
As the city manager has stated, that we will be receiving about 224,000 more in property taxes than we did this fiscal year, and a little more than half of that comes from new property. And the other, of course, will be higher valuations at the county level. A brief overview, what exactly is the effective rate? It is the hypothetical property tax rate that gives the city the same amount of revenue that it received in the previous fiscal year. What that means is when the appraised values go up at the county, your effective rate will go down, and then the opposite, if your appraised value goes down, your effective rate will go up. Why is it important? Because of truth and taxation requirements for all cities. If you exceed the tax rate, it triggers hearing requirement, and it could potentially require additional votes by the citizens. The rollback tax rate, which is what we have gone by for the proposed budget, it allows the city to raise 8% more than it did in the previous year for maintenance and operations. Why is this rollback rate important? Because if you exceed it, the citizens can petition to have a vote to reduce it back to the rollback rate. Currently, our property tax rate is .5959532, and we're proposing the .584456 with our rollback rate as 1/1,000th of a penny higher. So, we're staying right at the rollback rate. Why are we going to the rollback rate with just the 8% increase? Starting next year, Senate Bill Two has passed, and it will be in effect, which means they are tapping that rollback rate at 3.5% instead of the 8%, which will limit the amount of revenue that we can receive from property taxes next year on forward. Luckily, for cities less than 30,000 in population, they have added additional de minimis rate, which is a very complicated rate that they have yet to exactly explain. But once that is done, the city has the option of going to that de minimis rate instead of the 3.5% rollback rates, and that can allow up to 500,000 more than the previous rate. The reason they are doing that for the populations below 30,000 is because of the growth that the smaller cities are seeing throughout Texas. They feel that that 3.5% cap will hold the smaller cities back from being able to grow. And I'll pass this back to the city manager.
Any questions on that calculation? Had that bill been in effect this year, our property tax rate wouldn't have been up 224,000, the revenue received, it would have been up, what, 65,000?
It would have been 65,000 less than what we're able to.
I think originally, the government proposal was 2.5% or something like that, and negotiated that down. Every city in this county, if I had a five-year warranty to the county judge office, they buy the number, there would have been several cities in the county that would actually have been in a red, and this is a pretty good compromise. I think because of our growth over the next seven years, we've headed too far because of the amount of dollars. It's hard to see, separate sales tax rate, new businesses coming, so probably will bring plenty of new sales tax, bills, new scripts that are in town, libraries for, we'll see our trends in sales tax continue. The city administration budget, kind of the key points of that budget are the revenue side, we've been told about the property tax rate, or dollars increasing. Our sales tax continue to drop, we've had very less, currently turning 5% ahead of our plan, and it looks like we're going to end the year around $933,000 in sales tax. That's been a continuous trend. The last two months of sales tax the city has collected have been the highest two months that we've drawn in a whole year, maybe several years in this entire year. So, CDC and UC each receives $20,000 a month, so our sales tax are definitely tracking a right direction, and with some of these new businesses coming online, we took an optimistic view of $958,000. Can you tell us who our highest sales tax, our highest revenue? Our top actual sales tax is $200,000. No, who's, what business is that? Usually, Houston, I'm going to go. Our highest sales tax producer is the gas station, is it not, with the top company? Oh, that if I'm not mistaken, that's our highest producer. The community services development fee I spoke of before, this is a fee I discussed with Julie, and it sure is a legal fee, and if we can do it, it is a $1,250 permit fee, but it's only going to a house. Our issue today is, we have a number of parks in our community, and we have no revenue stream to support them. So, maybe we'll change, and have our, build new parks, and we need to have a revenue stream. So, when it comes back, and it's on those homes that we forecast will be here over the next year, it will generate almost $300,000 of revenue.
And that's on 2020 budget?
Yes.
With just purely new development that's coming in 2020?
Yes.
So, is that for each house that's built, or each lot that is zoned and ready to go?
When they pay their permit fee, build and make their connections.
They gotta pay that.
They gotta pay that. This is for Matchway Development? Matchway as well, they had orders coming due September 10th to deposit another, do all new development.
Is surrounding cities, Melissa and Al, they're doing similar?
I can't tell you about Anna and Melissa, I know there are about six cities, and I give you that are doing this at this point. So, it's a way for this city to make an equal impact on our ecosystem here, because right now, it's a moving money from one state to another, to try and keep things down, and just owing the grass, you know, there was no funding in the past, so. Well, in the past, developers had had to contribute to a park fund or? That's the land developer, not the person building the homes. This is uniquely to you, yeah. Sometimes they can be one and the same, but their requirement is to either set aside, what, 5% of the land value?
Land value, or 5% of the land.
So, what we end up with is the available land, and not exactly what we need here. And those people living in their home, their children playing, little, they get our homes, you know, they're participating in other parks programs, so this is a way to help us with it.
Lane, what are current developers, like, land developers or even housing developments that are coming in, doing with that 5%? Are they just designated as green space and they're calling that their park?
Sanford Park and Graywood donated the 5% money, so it's, that's basically how much the land's been funding some of the parks that's been going on. Thompson has got a six acre park out in their area, you know, it's kind of like the Georgetown Amenities Center, they created their park, but it's only good for their residents.
Yeah.
So, it's not, it's not part of the city, it's a benefit to the citizens of Valso, but to a limited portion, so.
So, I'll have that order, it's a preview, it's September, we can talk through it. If we remove it, then I have to go through the mix of adjustments in the budget, that's very difficult. The development fee, revenue grows, again, that's proportional to the housing development that's happening in the city. That's led in Bob's side of the house, that's engineering plan review, building inspections, those kinds of things, that went up substantially on the issue of revenue and expense because of what's happening here. On the expense side, salaries provide for the hiring of the community development planning director, who will oversee planning and zoning, permitting, engineering, GAS, building inspections, code enforcement, all those kinds of things. This is the first step in that process, this isn't the complete process, but it's getting the right person into the job. It's becoming a challenge to keep up, the revenue needs to keep up with, and this is the next logical step the city of Van Osten is taking. Salaries also provide for a pay increase for administrative staff, we have not done anything for the administrative staff beyond a 3.5% cost of living increase. In two years, we've adjusted the other departments and their turn in like planning sequence here. We dodged a bullet, our health insurance rates only went up 1.9% at premiums. Our building lease is now called out on the budget, in the past, it was buried in contract services, and now you can see it clearly on the budget, office supplies now called out as a line item, in the past, it was called other supplies. Professional services, these are expenses associated with an increase in development fees, so they're paying for the services, and we have to pay for those services to make that happen. Building inspections, Bureau of Veritas fees associated with increased development, we're going to have to have a discussion about how that will work in the future, but having, again, this community of development, they allow us to evolve in that area. And lastly, computer and internet, that's called out as a separate line item, previously was a contract services, so we need, so it's the administrative budget, it's pretty straightforward. Okay, now you can pick on Judy.
Okay, well, on to the library. As Lane was just talking about, new line items that have been relabeled, so they're more easily identifiable. I have a total of six, they're listed here, equipment is now called out as a separate line item, which is previously contracted, very new contract services. We have a computer and internet expense line, as well as a janitorial expense line, also previously very in 67,000, through contract services. I have two brand new line items, which are advertising and marketing, as well as small miscellaneous expense, all of those are outlined in the literature that you got. We had one last minute, change on your budget, you had it before, you said projected revenue expenses was $10,000, and you know, you'll know that it's changed to quite a very specific number, and that's because just it's very weak. I received notification that we did win a large grant from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission for $21,000.
Wow. So, that's on top of the 10?
No, I conject, I hoped for 10, but we got $21,000. So, and our expenses, notable expenses for this year was, 6303 went up quite a bit from our usual 2,000, and it's increased by an amount of $4,675. What, to break that 4,675 down, is 3450, 3450 is to replace our front doors, which are worn out, I'd like to think from all the people cleaning it up, but they've been repaired extensively and are beyond repair at this point. So, this represents replacing the two front doors, and the remaining $1,225 of that is to install seven ceiling fans. We worked for over a year to try to find someone to donate their expertise, because the equipment was donated from Lowe's, one of our friends of the library members procured seven ceiling fans from Lowe's, and now we just need to get them installed. I went ahead and asked Lane for permission to include that in the city budget, as this will have a direct impact on our electricity fees and fines, it's a cost. So, that's why I thought it was important enough to, we've exhausted every other option as well, so ask the city to please go ahead and pay for that, so, okay. Also, we have our step increases, which is actually part two of what Lane and I came up with last year. This will also increase, add a part-time court for us at the library, which is mentioned here. And then, of course, there's hard grant purchases, which are guaranteed, so it's a venue. Does anybody have any questions about the library section of the budget that I can answer?
So, right now, our director, which is you, obviously full-time admin assistant, the children's assistant, are they doing full-time?
They are, the children's physician just came full-time about four months ago.
So, yeah, that was my only question, was just looking at why the budget is so high on healthcare, but you have three full-time employees, and that's obviously.
Yes, sir, this will be, it would show quite an increase from last year to this year, because last year, she was that prominent, that physician was only full-time for, like I said, four months, and next year, obviously, it would be full-time, required benefits for 12 months, so.
Do you know what your door count is, how it's increased year over year? I, which I'm spot, but you're usually.
We're averaging 1,700 people, last month was 2,065 people came through our front doors, we're showing an increase, I believe, I'd have to look, I just looked at a lot of numbers in the net, so I don't have to report inaccurately, but I can get that for you.
What was the last year's?
Last year's door count?
Yeah.
Our last year's door count average was 1679, and we're 1,700 now. Last month, we saw over 2,000, but that's just summer programs, that's expected.
Last question for me, are there any other, outside of the grant that you just received, or any other partnerships, grants, revenue streams that we can help to not just further along the budget for the library now, but also to enhance, maybe building, the building itself, you know, some of the programs, programs are awesome, but just more that we can do for the town?
I'm looking at several grants, the problem with grants is that they're extremely time-consuming. The federal grants that I just completed, the TSLA grant that we won, I probably took at least 40 hours of staff time to do, and as short-staffed as we are, there's simply no time to work. And as short-staffed as we are, there's simply no time to work on that.
So Lane, maybe we need to figure out a way to help with that so we can help bolster the library and what it's doing for the community. Because I know I have a three-year-old that does Wednesdays up there and all the stuff that goes on with the library. And he loves it. And so it's just, it's a value add to our community. Our citizens love it. And so we just need to treat it as such.
It is, it is one of those services that we provide to make fit well in our municipal building as we plan forward.
Yeah.
And provide them with a space that's not a tent building, you know?
Yes.
Make them look friendly. They've done a good job, though. Their door counts have been consistent with growth in our community. And they do some of the strangest stuff over there with adult games. I hate to say it. Dungeons and Dragons.
No, didn't, didn't.
You wait no longer than that. But she's been real unique about the services being provided. And when they do youth programs, the place is packed. It's just a fun place to be.
I got one more question. Sorry, I'll kick it down there. Is there any partnerships that we have currently with the library and ISD?
No, not a formal partnership. However, I enjoy a strong relationship with Dr. Brown. And he allows, for instance, it started with Dr. Stead. And he allows us to market to the students. In other words, I have access to his electronic newsletter. And everything, of course, has to be approved before it's in. But he's been very generous with allowing us to place our flyers and so on and so forth. I'd like to see that develop into something else, to pool, to tap into the pool of volunteers. I very much, the friends need help tremendously to be membership increase. And anyway, to raise awareness of the library and our services, I'd like to develop the relationship.
Sponsorships, warm bodies, revenue money, all those things come along with that.
Mayor, good evening. So as far as fire MS budget goes, just to speak on our key points to start off with, on the revenue side, we did combine the community center with our department. We're taking care of it now. Keeping it stocked with full degrees, make sure it's clean and check on it after events happen over there and stuff. So we did combine the revenue as well as the expenditures to the fire MS budget. Other revenues, Grayson County, we still haven't heard back from them what that contract's going to pay out this year. I've reached out to them, but usually it's right at the very last minute. It's way behind those interests. To this, I did meet with Gunnar and Hal, negotiated with them. We had their calls. And I put that aside with them again to discuss an angle and increase to provide those services to them. Also, we did start fire agreeable. It's not noted in this budget at this time. Just because this is our first year, we have no idea what to project for that. It's based off of car rents and all that stuff. So we literally just kicked that off.
What's the program?
Fire agreeable.
So if you're in a traffic accident, may I respond? You're going to get a bill.
Well, actually, the street transfer's got me.
And a thank you card.
On the expenses, salaries increased due to prior first step inquiries to offer more paid to my staff. This also includes the city's cost of three additional personnel covered under the safer grant. We went out of the safer grant this year. And what it does is they pay a certain amount of personnel costs. Help us bring more people on. We pay that with three years. 75% of the salary we benefit this first year, second year, and 35% in this fourth year. So it kind of helps us step into that new road. And so we're still waiting to hear back. It's one of the most competitive ranks that we're going to go after in the fire service. And it's very competitive. So I cross my fingers that we get back because we really need it due to our call volume increases and significant increases in call volume. The cost of work, hiring, and that. And all that's shown to be in the city of Van Alstine and in our nearest station. So...
Chief, if I may, the safer grant has the city portion that you just pointed out. We did budget for that in his labor costs for the subsequent year. So if we're awarded, we've already got our portion of costs in. If we do not get that contract award, we could use that portion to help them with staffing, whatever dollar bonus there.
So in the budget, you're applying three additional bodies already in the budget?
Yeah, and it basically reflects that safer grant. So my current personnel was our cost share of the safer grant on those personnel. So you'll see an increase in salaries if we don't get the safer grant. Then we look at maybe higher one or two with that increase in there.
I get that, yeah. My biggest concern on that was the overtime. Why, if we're adding three new bodies, did overtime projected go up twice as much as that one?
Because that, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that is built-in overtime on the fire side. So in my role, we work a certain amount of hours. We're scheduled a certain amount of hours a year. And that adds your built-in overtime based on what's 212?
Yeah, typically in a two-week period, they work 120 hours. 106 of those hours are at regular time. And then the 14 hours are a time and a half.
But with the FFLA setup, you know, that's one guaranteed. So if somebody takes off, let's say, kind of a person, we can eat a lot of that in terms of straight pay. So...
It depends on the building. But some, you know, 160-hour work months, some work 8-hour work weeks. But fires are starting to be 24/7. Deer building is a totally different condition. Does that mean the accident kid, if they're building too much?
Cost of non-pharmaceuticals supply increased this year due to the type of calls we're getting. We had several CT cars this year, lots of problems, an increase in call volume altogether. You know, I feel with the growth of Van Alstine and the more people traveling along 75, you know, I hate to say it, but you know, this could be something that we see a lot more of unfortunately in Van Alstine. But we did notice a large increase in the pharmaceutical line item. Maintenance repairs of vehicles. This went up quite a bit due to, just looking at the amount we've been getting at the six-month mark. Unfortunately, we pretty much reached what we budgeted about six months due to unfortunate issues with our apparatus. We do have a, our backup engine has been down for some time. And we were looking at getting it back up and running with this related. We had to send our first outing unit to get work on and it was gone for over a month and we didn't have a backup unit because it was down also. So we were, it forced us to borrow an engine. Gunnar and I just want to go out with the apparatus. Next, we don't need to, we rely on Gunnar to operate our city. So I'm going to get that, that truck back up and running. And with larger fires, you know, I'm going to need it on the scene anyhow.
Chief, on this engine, can you get it back up and running? Or you just kind of cobble this thing together? Or it's going to just be a running tip?
I, speaking with my, we got over at our department, we feel that we can get it back up and running to be a reliable backup piece of equipment. But we're... This is, this is an open, and in the near future, we're going to have to look at putting our current first-out engine as a reserve, selling this old engine to get it to go. So we don't fall back into that money dip. Because like I, we did with the ambulance, you know, we finally got rid of that old ambulance, bought a new ambulance. And with the time, basically, six years, and that's something that we're going to look into.
Yeah, that's something we're just going to bring up later. But we need to look at all the five-year equipment needs, especially because you're so expensive.
Oh, absolutely.
They're so necessary anymore. Anyway, I won't get bogged down in the details of how much it's going to cost. But you know, if it's worth putting the money for, let's do it. But I don't want to spend a whole lot of money on something you're just going to...
Right, absolutely.
You know, of course, there's a difference between not having nothing, you know, we'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked the chief to start developing his plan for the next fire station. Probably going to have that first station standing in 24 months. And it comes equipped with a lot of new equipment as well. So that'll help this.
That's another reason, you know, instead of, you know, trying to pull the trigger on such an explicitly expensive piece of equipment, looking to see how this pans out before we make huge decisions on that. And, you know, while it's quite an increase, it's not dramatic enough to me to look at that and why yet. Capitalized items, the only thing I had in capitalized items is bunker beer. Bunker beer is becoming more of a compliance issue on a state level as years go by. Mostly due to, you know, 9/11 and firefighters getting cancer these days. We're seeing more and more firefighters getting cancer. And they're linking it back to dirty gear. All this soot and stuff on the gear with these new, with the new materials that they build houses with. It's a lot nasty here. So when we go on the fires and stuff, that stuff collects on the gear, exhaust flanking on the gear and stuff like that. So we're starting to see lots of cancer patients in the fire. So as far as the compliance stuff goes, we're likely to have it cleaned certain times a year and inspected. And when I say inspected, I'm talking a thorough inspection, sending it off, having the life safety repairs made and make sure, make sure we're taking every effort to prevent cancer cases. So I think we'll start seeing a more, a much larger frequency in having it cleaned here.
I don't think so. There's some of those heavy-duty washers for me.
I'm sorry.
I don't think you can just come to this bunker beer.
We can, we have a washer over there. Yes, we actually received that off of a, off of a grant that we were back, which was huge for us because that actually decreased quite a bit of cost for us when we do sent off. Because we might have to pay a company to clean it for us now. We can do ourselves and all we're going to do is inspect it and repair it and fix it. So that is all I have. Y'all have any questions for me?
Do you send that off after every big fire or?
No, after every big fire. Normally, we will clean it here. So anything about beer, it's made to be, it's made to be washed 20 times in time. Okay? Well, on a state level, where you have a structural firefighter, they can't even set a gear that is 10-year lasting manufacturer day. So we'll definitely wash it twice a year. Okay? Well, that's important for people who see lots of fires. Okay? You're getting more and more dirt on that gear that you're, it's becoming more and more red. So that's what we see going into the future is we're having to wash the gear more which decreases this life expectancy.
I noticed your outside building's a nail part of it. Sorry. Of your, this is the main receiving rate of handling the other, of your re-burkers.
Oh, okay. You're going to say the decrease?
Your actual, what I'm saying is this nail part of it. Because you had, you received like $144,000 for racing training before this $96,000.
Yeah, when I last looked at it, we were, we were on track everywhere. I mean, the money from racing and stuff, I don't know when they usually pay the rest at all.
They should, they have been paying monthly.
You're blocking your yearly budget.
Yes.
This is pretty far down.
The main thing that I try to keep track of and keep my eyes on is the entrance and proud payment. And looking at the each month report and going to that, it builds us to be on track.
Who's the contract services with you?
There's several. I'll get my budget bible over here that I can... So my contract services, obviously, obviously, 65, Texas Fire Department. They come in, check our fire standards, your tag and stuff. First check for leak hours, background checks, tasking system. That's how we refill our air packs. They have to come in, check the filters and basically the air sample on them to make sure we have good air to breathe when we put those on. Post-testing, pump testing, ladder testing, that's a state compliance. Outer shatter testing, we do that as well. That's for our models. Our paging system, medical director, employee drug testing, physical street counters, and our sharpstanding disposals.
Is there a reason though, well, I guess it's not, too much different from '19 to '20? But just, I mean, we only have, what, two months left? And maybe they want them to go out at the end of the year? Is that why we're so far down in expenses for this year? Because you budgeted out 18 and then you're only at 11 and then you budgeted out again another 18?
Yeah, I believe, like West Care, we had an 18, I believe, yeah.
So you still have some more payments left?
Yes. Yeah, we still have some more payments with that. West Care is one of the bigger ones. And we could, I don't know off the top of my head, I could have found a break in something, you know?
Yeah.
Take this money somewhere in there and move that route instead.
I'm excited for you guys. Like what Lane has been talking about, we did kind of work on it. You know, just talk with Manchway about getting, you know, a real fire station. You guys with real equipment.
Yeah.
Y'all being a, a real department, I mean, you are, but I mean, but being one that we can actually look at other cities.
Oh, yes.
We're proud, you know, we envy what they got and, you know, we're proud of what we have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's exciting, huh?
Yeah.
True.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Yeah, there you go.
For the police department, on the grant side, that's the grant, our platform for radios and T-Cock that we run into next year. And then, of course, the corporate best grant, which we're getting about $1,000 from here. What we've increased is, y'all remember we were in a staggered position last year? So those kind of dollars, we have about full salary this year. Plus, we're in the need of a detective. You know, when you go out here and people report crimes and there's no follow-up, it's a struggle. So just in this year alone, from last year... So just in this year alone, from last year, just on CPS referrals, we're up from thirty last year to sixty-six, we'll probably get a hundred this year on just CPS referrals that are working.
How many are you?
About a couple of years. We had just three today. Typically, once school starts back, then we add more outcries, so, and as the community grows and unfortunately, you know, things occur, you know, and those things take time to investigate, so, just like I said, just along today, we have three come in, so. But we need, we're in need of a detective, the workload is there, because we want cases to be followed up when, after that report's done. And we're doing a great job now, but it's kind of overwhelming at this point, so definitely the need is there for the work for that, for that position. And that will start to let the person do it.
And I don't think you have anybody to really bring up any challenges in this?
Well, we got, we got three that are experienced, but, you know, Collin County is, in their county, it's real nice because they actually have people that are assigned to the Child Acting Center. For us, we're grateful we have a Child Acting Center, it's a great organization, but we are, if the car is here, we have to do the follow-up and work it all the way through. So sad thing is, is that the numbers are increasing. I guess if there's good out of this because it's a way to make outcries, there's more people that will make outcries. Now, now, all these outcries become, you know, realistic, but it's our job, you know, to prove whether they are or not, prosecute or investigate. They don't relate that kind of, because you are involved with children and, of course, y'all probably seen in the blog, you know, we had a sexual assault last weekend when it occurred here, so we're working that. But things like that increase. So as the community grows, you know, he is in custody and so we, we got a good case there. That's, that's the major, is the salaries from last year increasing because we staggered it out, adding the detective and then the purchase of a vehicle, the T-Cock fleet replacement program. And then on the municipal court and communication, as y'all know, our communication, our municipal court courts do, and they were very poorly paid, so we get a, that increase is gonna show for the municipal court communication, which is on the next slide.
Reimburse salaries if they're.
That's for the school district, that's for the school resource office.
Are they behind you because they're?
Yeah, they, they, they're billing.
And we only bill them quarterly.
They only bill them quarterly.
So we get two quarterly pays still.
You know, the school district works on a different budget here than we work on, so we, they'll, they'll pay you.
Very fortunate, they bill those, it's a hundred percent.
It's always a hundred percent.
It's a hundred percent.
Typically, it's thirty-seven in most states and we're at a hundred percent.
This side is upper parks and rec, city manager did a very good job at the beginning, mentioning what would be included in the general fund, parks and rec. There it is, there's a three percent pay increase for the two employees that already exist, there's no additional employees being added. Professional services does include the eighty-five thousand related to taking the downtown design to the next level of getting the plans out there. Capitalized item include sixty-three thousand dollars for the park awnings and other park equipment as well as the additional vehicle. And then, short and sweet, the museum and senior center, the museum expenses are remaining the exact same as last year and the senior center expenses decreased just based off of what we had done so far until we announced.
I am having some discussions with VASA right now, trying to get an operating agreement in place for them going forward. It's always been a kind of a finger pointing relationship with VASA and it's kind of led to one side of the grass gets cut, on the other side of that fence, it doesn't get cut. In principle, they agreed to pay the city to provide that service, so we can either offset the current labor or hire a part-time individual that can take care of the fields and the grounds associated with all of our sporting activities in our community and it will be at no cost to the city. But that hasn't been locked down yet, that's just a verbal agreement that I have with a member of VASA and they're to present that at their next board meeting, which I think is this Sunday or the following, I'm not sure, but when I have it, we may have to make a budget and then a quarterly one.
That's the, that's the, you have the thousands going into something to develop for this.
Um, councilmen, ladies, street budget this year is basically is the same, pretty much the same as always. We're gonna do a county contract services to assess what roads may be repaired. We're trying to stay aligned with the previous five year schedule that we've had, some of the roads are actually deteriorating faster than, than we already repaired and they're deteriorating. We're looking at sometime in the future changing factors in the year. Right now, we'll be able to cover as much of the city as possible out of, or seventy-seven thousand dollars, we'll still stay with chip seal. In the budget, there's capital projects, which is a busy parkway and staying roads. We're gonna try to take a road going into the sewer plant, we'll give all the cities and provide chip seal with a county that provided their part in that road. We do have a potlou patcher, we've been buying asphalt by the load and it didn't hang around very long when you buy it. So you get what you can and you lose the rest. The potlou patcher, we can actually set it up on days that we didn't have a whole lot going on, we can cruise the city with potlou patchers, same potlou patcher that county's using. I've used this potlou patcher in two other cities that I've worked with a piece of equipment and it provides quick repair and outcries. If anybody else has any more questions about this route, we'll have to answer them.
How come there's no sales tax revenue for projected out of two thousand and twenty?
On the sales tax two twenty, hundred seventy-seven thousand?
Well, it's not projected out of two thousand.
Oh, I, I won't know until sales tax.
It's on the next, the next page, there's, after the streets department, there's one that's, sales tax streets per the auditor, and we have separated the sales tax, sales tax street fund out so we can, so we can track that, that what appears to be known as the sales tax dollars better.
I mean, we had it separated, I asked, we had a lot of the streets and then we had a lot of, by now, we had twenty thousand to break the street budget.
And you're gonna fix the village parkway entrance?
Yes.
Everybody hear that, that tear that's coming up? We're fixing it.
Nobody's. Well, we've got asphalt here back door, so you ought to be really happy.
I, alright. Me personally.
Anything else?
Is it a whole piece of equipment or is it? It's a trade agreement. We have two dump trucks, one we use, we set up to use as rag or for, and we can buy the, instead of buying a tank and a store of a mauler, we'll take it up with county.
As we, potlou patcher's been an interesting education for me through this whole process. One of the things that I talked about briefly is probably council direction, not now, but at some point in the future, on do we want to continue to use chip seal on our, our streets in the city or do we want to start doing asphalt paving on our streets? As we migrate towards asphalt, which we're gonna do Cali Lane up to this in future, that's when that machine, potlou patcher really becomes a valuable piece of gear. We can use it now, but going forward into the future with asphalt, it really becomes a lifesaver, so.
When we eventually get the asphalt, then we'll pump it out a little rubber, follow the potlou patcher, do a little more patching. On some major holes, we may have to go in and soft cut and square it out. What happens with asphalt, if you don't take the bowl out, it just washes it back out. If you put a square corner in it, then it's not as.
Well, my husband's a potlou patcher for the city of Kansas.
Well, I've done that too, in the services.
Well, good, we know who to call.
I've had my own show and I have my own family. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, it's kind of, you all stand out on a county line road and patching bottles with all the traffic, it's a nightmare.
How much is it, if you go from chip seal to asphalt, though, like is that heavy play on like what the county will provide and like what the county will do?
County does, that's where it's at, chip seal. Is it forty dollars?
Yeah, but what, Dan's right, they will, the county will not do asphalt.
So if we go asphalt, then it's all on us.
They're only gonna do the chip seal.
Wow, you know what?
That's what they're, that's what they're equipped to do and that's what they, that's what they do on most of the towns.
What we're doing with the county is actually creating a base, we're going there, ground the street up, we'll put eight inches of base rock in, do a patching for about three to six weeks. We've created a base on that road that we didn't have before. The asphalt that we do have in the city is just on natural soil, that's the reason you see the waves and stuff come into it. If you don't have a base, that road's just as good as putting it on water.
It would take our ability down from eight to ten roads a year to probably two, but those two roads are the last, a long, 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 long time. But right now, even new chip seal is failing.
Yeah, and Kelly's not good.
It's not.
We had another conversation, we want to eventually move to asphalting as citizens can afford it.
Well, and the timing on it too, a lot less time consuming with asphalt than it is with chip seal.
It depends on what the base condition is.
And if you're going on some of those streets and we hadn't done chip seal on your asphalt's not our last name.
We're putting asphalt.
But if you're putting asphalt over chip seal, you've got a great.
What is the village parkway, what's that gonna be?
It's gonna be asphalt. Going back how many feet on village parkway?
It's going back to the rated, it's going about forty, forty-five feet back, right to the edge of the concrete and then it'll be a, over, it'll be an asphalt overlay.
What was it last time?
It was a chip seal.
That's where all those holes came in? But that's the biggest thing is the water washed out or anything like that, so you were actually doing it correct, getting the drainage out.
Yeah, we have parallel, we have, the design's done, I mean, we have parallel called, we have two twenty-four inch culverts going underneath to get the water from north to south and then we're gonna grade the road so it'll be, be drivable at that point.
In, in the asphalt, we, we, I'm all about to go with asphalt, go with chip seal. Were we looking in the areas where we can put curbing, concrete curbing, butter to contain that asphalt so we don't get the chipping off, the scaling and chipping off the side?
We really need to empower cops, too.
Oh, absolutely, I understand.
I can't answer that at this point over because I'm just looking for direction and then I'll find out.
I know Cali Lane, asphalt in Cali Lane, you gotta put curbing in Cali Lane, but that makes sense a lot, it's just not gonna happen. But if we're in asphalt roads inside town where we have drain issues anyway, or we'll put culvert laps underneath, containing that asphalt, keeping it from, you know, crocked out on the side.
There's a Wes Jefferson and.
Rigsby.
Rigsby have curbs already and their asphalt is contained, so if you want to see what that, I mean, that's an example of when that was done, but.
Think about it, you know, like, I can buy trailer, right?
One side.
Everybody speaks that in.
Well, we can see that was the best part.
One street that's only hard to put curbing butter in is northern Dallas. The street is seven, twenty-four inches higher than the drainage ditch, so that's one way to do that is just go in, drop the sewer and water line, have a mower and music and we do it.
There's some trees that you haven't gotten.
Yeah, everybody wrong. Any more questions?
Alright, thanks, Steve. Before we move on to the utility fund, I thought I'd kind of set the stage on the utility fund. In our general fund, you might recall from the audit that we poured out, the city's in good shape with a cash reserve that's several months lost, so we're in a position to weather a storm that tornado or come through our town, but our water fund is upside down, meaning we've taken enough revenue to pay for our daily operations, everything that you're seeing here, but we're not able to operate in the green, if you will, when you consider the debt that's in the water fund. After recommendation of the auditors and your approval, the city went out and hired a firm to do a water rate study. They, we sent them boxes and boxes of data, if you will, on operating income expenses so that they could formulate a water rate study. That study is not done and probably won't be done till the end of September, so formulating a budget was difficult and what we didn't want to do is build a budget and then come forward saying, hey, we require an adjustment to our water rates based on whatever we put forward here today. And only to have the water rate study come back and then say, oh, by the way, we're gonna take a second water rate increase or an adjustment, whatever that is, when that study is done. So I made the decision to hold water rates exactly where they are today, so we did whatever our rates are today times the number of new houses that we're having to get to, what kind of revenue we have available for us, and then we built what we could afford to do on our water side with expenses. Does that make sense? Once we get the water rate study done, that company's gonna come in here and present that, council makes a decision that if rates need to go up to support whatever enhancements we want to make, we have a laundry list of things that we need to do that we'll add back into the budget. So there's gonna be a budget amendment in this process. But today, what you're approving is based upon the dollars that we have available, we're gonna show you Len's famous slideshow with all the current information, what we can afford to do. Now, I'll tell you, there are things that we would like to do that we are not doing right now, like we don't have money to repair a well that goes down, so we know we're gonna have to do that, we just have to choose what we have to do today over what we want to do in the future, okay? So that's where we are at this point, that's what you're approving on this budget. Understand there'll be an amendment once that. Understand there'll be an amendment once that rate study is done.
Okay. As, as shown on the slide, you can see the difference between revenues and expenditures this year. It is showing, it's showing a drop instead of being flat, and that difference is, if you see the asterisk at the bottom, we, uh, in previous budgets, we, all the impact fees that came in to the city that the builders were paying, went into the general budget to help cushion it. Well, and, and impact fees are restricted funds when they come in anyway, so when we took an impact fee, it came in, acted as a revenue, but it can only be spent on certain projects. So, the auditors and Lane have moved impact fees out of the general water and sewer revenue and the expenditure side, so that's gonna be a separate budget all to itself. But this will be the first year you see the decrease, and the difference in revenue this year versus next year is about four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's what we're expecting to get in impact fees. So, that, you know, that, that's what you're gonna see as the apparent difference going forward on the, on these revenues. Again, yeah, some of you are, well, Katrina's getting her first look at this, but we have, we have a little rate spreadsheet that allows, we have these six variables that we plug in depending on the, the city's comfort to doing this. You know, obviously, you can, uh, change revenues and cost and expenses. The number of customers you have, the more customers you have, more people are paying in, so that, it, that puffs up the budget a little bit. Uh, the extra fees and charges that might be out there. Uh, we have to forecast the number of gallons sold, and so we, you know, this year, we forecasted a hundred and fifty million gallons was gonna be sold. We're on track to do about a hundred and forty-seven million, so we're, you know, that, that's a nominal cost of be there. Next year's budget, we went up to a hundred and fifty-three million. So, just kinda keep, uh, and then we have a two-component portion to the rate. We have the base rate, and then we have the consumption rate. So, and you'll hear, you know, why don't we have a cheaper base rate? And why, why don't we put more on consumption? I feel like I'm talking to Dr. Brown again. Uh, but, and the base rate, if our, if our base rate is higher while we're still small and growing, it's guaranteed revenue. And we get that every month, no matter if nobody uses water. If we go as, in bigger cities, as they get larger, consumption will do that in the base rate. We can start lowering the base rate, and then consumption takes over, and then people are paying for the water they use. We're just not at that breakover point yet.
We're getting close.
We're getting, we're getting close. Within two to three years, I think, we'll be at that point where we can start adjusting that base rate down, and then just rely on consumption to make that happen. So, the funding you see here, uh, water and sewer sales is a little over three million. The fees are a hundred and twenty-two, and then the sanitation contract, the trash contract is in the sewer budget, but that's money in and money out. We'll fund two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and there's an expense of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it's...
Yeah, I have that, Len?
Yep.
We have, sitting with Julie, that right now, our review of our sanitation solutions, or our, our waste collection services in, in Danoski, so I'm ready to put that solicitation on the street. But we, as a city, are providing a service at the expense of our taxpayers, and we're not getting any revenue for it. By that, I mean, if you want trash service, you call the front desk, and we're doing some labor for sanitation solutions and not being reciprocated. So, in this next agreement, we will have a clause contained in that agreement that pays the city some portion of that franchise fee, so that we can offset our costs.
Yeah, and then, uh, then in the budget, you'll see, there's the detail behind it. You got one point six-six million in water expenses, and then one point six-three million, one point six-four million in sewer. Coming up to those total budget numbers. And you're seeing a, about an eighty, seventy-five thousand dollar surplus. Like Lane was saying, we're in the, we're in the negative, we're trying to budget to start chipping away at that deficit to get back to an operational fund. Uh, the way this work, there's only two, we've got sales, and we got missing the S's in the water fund, and we got sales and the solid waste contract in the other one, so it's pretty straightforward. You can see your water and sewer rates are, are the lifeblood of, of these funds. And then here's how it's split up, between salaries, uh, debt service, capital projects, and then maintenance and operation. And then also, on the sewer side, there's the solid waste contract. So, you kinda see all these resources. Uh, this is the infamous rate machine, as it spits it out. And this year, you'll see there is a zero percent forecasted project, or, uh, forecasted, uh, rate change for water and sewer based on Lane's discussion. Once we get the rate survey back, and, uh, we can figure out what the water rate really needs to be, but to do this, we we just cut the revenues back to the proportionate style of the, uh, or the, to the expenses, so we can do that. There's a mi, you can see a minor change in the base rate, I think it's three cents or one cent, uh, for each watt water versus sewer, based on where we're spending the money, so it kinda jockey's back and forth from time to time, but it's, it, the bottom line is, your base bill is gonna be exactly the same. And then, you, you have a detail sheet on this, this is how this proposed rate, the existing rate, which is the same, compares to the current rates with all our neighboring cities and relative competitors, including Merrill Lee and South Grace, which obviously don't offer sewer service, but they offer water service. So, you kinda see where they, where they stand in all the related, and and then go down to your total bill, and you'll see that Anna and Melissa have reached that breakover point I was telling you about, about the base rate, that's why their base rates, most everybody's up in the thirty-dollar, thirty-five-dollar range, and they went down to the twenty-dollar range to do that. But they are also, on the CGMA water line, they are going through their take-or-pay. I mean, they're gonna be paying for that water forever, whether they're gonna use it or not as they grow. So, I mean, they, they are really heavy-handed on the, you know, they're gonna be in the Plano-Richardson dilemma with North Texas, on they're gonna pay for water that they're not gonna be using in, in the future. Any questions on the comparison? Uh, the capital improvements, these are all in the sewer fund, 'cause the water fund is, not there. We're, uh, we're gonna continue, we skipped over, we're doing the West Jefferson. East-West Line is a sewer priority that Steve had, and there's a missing gap between Jefferson and Shreveport, where the last Dallas water line stopped. This is, this'll complete that loop and get that. The water side of it, that project is in the impact fee fund and on the capital improvement program. So, the water side of that Dallas street will go to the, the impact fee. The sewer side goes to the, to the capital fund out of the regular budget, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Steve's got a major issue over on Clement Drive, and a sewer repair there from Mayan to Pearl. And then, we've got ten thousand dollars to help any issues that come up in the wastewater treatment plant. Like Lane said, we don't have funds to fix wells, or do anything else, but this is what we're, this is what we've kinda accumulated the money to do to make this work. And then, just to kinda give you a back history, these were projects, if you saw previous budgets of capital uh, projects that were out there, that have been deferred because other emergencies came up. We had, we had a building for the Raz pump, uh, the Clement sewer line was on this year, so we had to postpone it. It was a smaller section, it's, it's, it's gotten worse and longer and bigger, so we're doing that. Manhole repairs, uh, Well Three has been out of service since April of twenty seventeen, and we're, we've just kicked that bucket one more year to do that. And with the C, we went online with the CGMA water from Melissa, you know, the CGMA water line in April of twenty seventeen, so the supply we were getting out of Well Three, we've supplemented with the CGMA stuff. And so, we're, we're just kinda, we got the water we need, but we're without one of our arms, basically, out there. Well Three isn't a major well, but it is one of the wells that we use, so... Uh, the backhoe that Steve needed, we, uh, we always talk about replacing the gates, have the lift station on seventy-five, that's, that's, if you go back about five years, that's still there. Uh, we're still haven't done anything with it. We, uh, Well One and Well Three, you kinda see that we have some pretty good capital needs, and if the rate study comes back, as Lane expects, these will be a lot of the projects Steve, Steve will reprioritize. We'll come back and try to get these projects back in, so that we can take care of this, 'cause all this stuff just creates more maintenance and extra time for his guys to go out and cover what, what we're being efficient on going forward. Any questions on the water survey?
Would we likely be able to sell any water back to you?
Yeah, we, yes, yeah, we're, right now, we're tracking at about, uh, ten to twelve million gallons that we're gonna get back from Melissa and Anna, Melissa and Anna. And just, I don't know if you are aware, but our take, our take-or-pay is part of the four cities that originally did it, is fifty-nine million gallons a year. We, we have, through Steve, it, with all the wells that we have operational doing that, we always anticipate taking up to fifty million gallons and leaving that nine million gallon cushion, that we can do that, so it's... We don't wanna get into the take-or-pay work, 'cause once we go above fifty-nine million, then we're paying, if we go to a hundred million, we're paying a hundred million gallons for the rest of time, and so...
So, there's a ceiling, but it's getting, you can't go down?
Yeah, yeah, and we're stuck...
Once you burst into the ceiling, you're...
Once you, once you go through the ceiling, you're always moving that ceiling out. Ceiling can only go up, it can't come down, so... And the original, uh, take-or-pay was fifty-nine million. The city paid for that from two thousand four to twenty seventeen, without taking a single drop of water. Now, we're just, we're just kinda using it as the buffer, if, and Steve's had Well Five and Well Four go down, which are major producers, we can supplement with the CGMA water, but we're using...
How much did we use in nineteen, and how much are we gonna use in nineteen of that?
We already talked about it for nineteen.
Yeah, the, the water, we use, I think we used that right at forty-eight, forty-nine million, so...
We had a lot of issues in nineteen.
We still, I mean, with the, when I brought Well One on this year, that produced a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty gallons a minute that I didn't have last year. So, anything that I needed, even with Well Three down, which is almost a two-hundred gallon a minute square, it provided the extra water, so I didn't have to get into the ceiling back.
But, yeah, we're using, we're, that's an operational procedure that's in an annual public works. We don't want, we just wanna use that as a cushion. Yes, we wanna use as much, we wanna get as close to that take-or-pay, so we don't... And right now, the way it works is we get money back from Melissa and Anna eventually, but we don't wanna ever hit that, 'cause that's, that ceiling never comes down.
Well, I guess my, to be fair, it almost sounds like we need to get Well Three back, if we can.
Well, we, right now, right now, we can meet all the supplies without a major well going out, without too much issue. But we need to have Well Three, with five hundred and fifty new lots coming on board in the next year, yes, Well Three is soon that we, we're gonna have, need that soon.
I was worried not only that it's gonna pass any, but what if something else goes down? And we have no cushion yet.
Well, the, the good thing about the CGMA water line can produce as much water as all four of the existing wells that we're using. So, we could get all our water out of that right now, and it would supply what the other four wells do. You know, we're, we're only working on three, huh?
You're gonna pay...
But, but, yeah, but then you're gonna go pay, yeah, you're gonna end up paying for it for, from here to the future, so... That, you know, like, again, it's just an operational practice, we're using just to use that, but...
What's the total number of gallons in the millions of water that we use combined with CGMA and our wells for years?
But you're, we're, we're tracking to about a hundred and forty-eight million gallons this year, so...
The, the difference is Steve pays a nominal amount for the well water, but if you buy extra water beyond what we're already obligated to buy, then you have to pay that North Texas rate as well, which is, you know, three dollars?
Two dollars and seventy-six cents per thousand, so...
That's the other difference of why you don't wanna go over that, if you can help them, 'cause that water's a lot more expensive than the well.
The Red River authority charges me about, uh, eight, six, eight, eight, six to eight thousand dollars a year for the water versus CGMA, which our base rate is, what, two-twenty-five?
It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the budget.
Just our base rate, uh, but if I exceeded the, the base, then that could actually double the price and more, more water I get, once it gets locked in, it costs us three times as much to produce our well water.
So, we're, we're, we're set up for the growth, we have the capacity to get it. It's just, we don't wanna jump into that take-or-pay pool until we need to, so... And then, you know, like I said, we still got Well Three in reserve to handle the next wave of growth, and then after that, we can handle, then we can handle...
As a noun, reserve refers to the quality of a shire bodice.
And we're gonna go in and, uh,
as a verb, to reserve.
Reactivate Well Six, which would be a blending station for Well Six CGMA water, and well water be blended right there on site, and stuff, and then, and then the lights.
Uh, okay, and then, uh, just the water revenues, again, like I said, we, we forecast based on history. Engineers never jump out over the tips of their skis, so we've used, uh, like I said, we went from a hundred and fifty million to about a hundred and fifty-four million, and brought water revenues. There is a three percent pay increase, no, no new positions. Uh, maintenance and repairs for the driveways at, out on Spain Road that they talked about earlier. Um, office equipment for the new building, and then there, and this is what we talked about, no reserves for repairs for tanks, pumps, wells, or motors. We're gonna hope we make it through, and if, you know, that's...
For two thousand and nineteen, how much did we use on repairs for tanks, motors, and...
Hundred thousand on wells. Uh, we used on Well Five, we used, uh, fourteen thousand on Well Five. Uh, on, uh, Well Six, we replaced a variable feed drive, cost us six thousand dollars.
Is that a high year?
Well, the hundred thousand was to get Well One back in service, so we took a well that wasn't active, and now it's produced...
Kind of like a little Well Three right now?
Really, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's not in service, and...
I don't feel comfortable not having, at least some reserve.
Well, I was trying to get to a reasonable number of what we can feel like, you know, we need a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget to be able to make sure our city doesn't go class steps backwards if we have, you know, a major cap.
If I could have my way, uh, right now, I'd just like to stay with the rate we have now. If we had to lose a well, I could increase my flow, because I'm in a new year with CGMA, and I can increase it till I can get that, we'll see whether or not we have to increase the budget, then we keep going.
I think what's important is what I started with. You're just saying what we had to do to make this budget work. We're gonna see, this rate study, we're gonna revisit all of this, we can deal with that. If, if, if a well went down and we needed to repair a well, we have the resources to repair a well. We can make those things happen, so... We're trying to paint the picture of things we need to do, and we'll do, but we have to wait a couple of weeks till we get that rate study back.
But even with the rates, even with the rate study coming back, the rate study, if rate study comes back when rates are raised, it's still not gonna, it's not gonna affect the, the hearings and everything for the tax rate, because the tax rate, tax rate for disaster to roll back, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's two different, right, two different, two different revenues.
It's two, it's two different revenues, yes.
Yes, I understand that, but just clear it up for everybody here.
Yeah.
We vote on the tax rate to the rollback rate, which gives us the city the revenue. And then we vote on the budget to go forward because the state requires us to. And then we commit the budget once we have.
That's correct.
But our revenue is coming in and the tax rate is not changed.
That's correct.
Yeah, and you have to look at water like a retail transaction. You know, we're selling the hopped out of gallons at the time.
And just, just as a quick history, last year, council approved a four percent rate increase on water and sewer. The three or four previous years, they limited it to three percent. So, you know, we've been, we've been averaging a three to four percent rate increase over the last five or six years. But that was with, you know, trying, trying to catch up. And obviously, we're still falling behind, so. But just kind of paint the picture as you see, as we see it. Again, Well Three was removed. Cathodic protection from the tanks, the ground storage tanks that you see, they're, they're made of steel. They rust. The cathodic protection takes all the, takes all the electrolysis out of the water and quits from those, the tank, you know, stops or slows the tanks from rusting, I guess the best way to put it. Professional services includes engineering, thank you very much. Contract services.
Slid that in there, didn't you?
I didn't put it, I didn't do this one. Contract services included and on the list behind the budget includes all the testing that Steve needs to do for water, sewer, all the, all the services to keep those systems running. We did remove a public works vehicle from, from the budget. And question they want to talk about, we have twelve hundred and some odd dollars, is it more than that? There's a credit card fee, there's a credit card fee that we show as an expense that when we take credit cards for water bills, we get charged two point nine percent. So we're, we're taking that cost from them. So if they want to pay with a credit card, does the city want to look at?
Why are we paying that much? Is that standard that's on top?
Yeah, it's just a big credit fee. Every change charges a fee.
PayPal's two point five, Square is three point five.
It, well, whatever the city, yeah, I was, yeah, that was a, for instance, I don't know exactly. I don't know exactly what the number is. Most of the transactions I see PayPal is two point nine percent for whatever thing I've done, but.
Yeah, they have to see, maybe a tier.
In two thousand and eighteen, it, we paid twenty thousand dollars in that fee. And we're online for about fifteen thousand at the end of this year to cover that. So that's.
Do you have the actual rate that we're paying? Does that listed there?
No, I don't have that, but I can get that for you.
Five years ago, we asked for a fee to be added in. At that time, the council said, no, they want to give the services back as a free service to the people.
Um, not at the time.
Yeah. It's like if you go, if you go to the county or any other city, they ask you, you know, if you're going to use credit cards, there's a.
As convenient as possible, but that's a pretty significant impact.
Yeah, and then on the sewer budget, the revenue, we, again, we created the revenue stream based on history of sales. There is three percent pay increase, no new positions. Reduced reserves for the repair of the lift stations and the sewer plants that goes out. Again, thank you for the professional services. Captain, you have to put that in, let's Angela.
Everybody wants to cut back.
Capitalized projects include the Clement sewer repair that we talked about, the Jefferson, Dallas Street from Jefferson to Shreveport, and then the ten thousand dollar wastewater treatment plant. The SCADA system, we were going to, the, what basically Steve operates the water system on is at the old building and talks through radio to all the tanks and knows when all the pumps come on. That's staying at that building for right now before we can move it out there. We've got to do a relay. We don't, we need a line of sight and all that other stuff, so. That, that part of the water, the, the brains of the water system are going to stay over here. And he's able to communicate with, through his computers, but.
Now my internet's over there.
No, my internet.
Can you move the relay to the, to the dispatch?
Well, we, we got, it's going to cost them fourteen thousand dollars.
Can you move some of that down?
But if we get to sewer plants, it's going to be almost forty.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, that's.
That's in town.
Clearly, you've got to have a mast out there, don't you?
Yeah, we have to have a mast out there. We're talking about putting it on the elevator tank here, so we have a clear line.
Is that, is this tall enough to be?
The, yeah, the tank is.
How big is that hole?
Uh, I think, uh, Gail said ninety feet.
Ninety feet out of the, out of the treatment plant. So.
We had it in this budget, so we deferred it till we found out what the rate is. But like right now, if we, it's supposed to call us when we have problems. When the internet went down, we had no idea the internet was down, so we had to go sit. We babysitting from inside the sewer plant, I mean, inside the building there. Anytime we make changes, we have to come up here now and make changes.
But the SCADA system is just the, the computer programs that relay. I mean, you, you can turn on pumps and motors, you can see the levels of the tanks. If they, you basically operate the whole system remotely. And it gives you a little, you know, when you pull it up on your phone and see it, it gives you a little bit of comfort that everything's working okay. Uh, okay, impact fees. Any, any questions on sewer? Just so you know, the impact fees, you called the first public hearing on impact fees at your September meeting to talk about the new capital program and changing those fees. Or the planning and zoning are recommending that to you. You'll see that at the September meeting. We have forecasted the two hundred and thirty-eight new houses. If the impact fee adjustment goes in, that will produce about one point six six million dollars in impact fees to help do water and sewer projects. So that's another way to get this stuff done. The caveat is those are restricted funds and the projects that that money is spent on has to be on the capital improvement program. So we try to, and they have to retain the growth. And so we have outlined, you'll see at your September meeting, the, the capital improvement program for the next ten years as we see the city growing and what that does. But that's one point six million dollars to do additional work. The Thompson tract out on Jim Jones and one twenty-one across from the college has come in. They, they are in the, you'll probably see this at your September meeting too. Their development agreement will dedicate one point three six million dollars to the city in impact fees. That'll help get the water and the sewer from in front of the college at his Well Five out to them. So it's really money in, but it gets money out there, gets those hundred and sixty lots started.
Can any of that money be used for maintenance on wells or to, like, even if we're saying like we need that well because of the growth? We need to.
Well, one of the projects you'll see in the impact fees coming up is the new elevated storage tank that'll be out on Five. That is in there. So that, it's related to growth. We can't, you said maintenance, we can't do maintenance.
Well, maintenance, but like this, like, well, three's down, we need it for growth, like we can use.
If we're increasing capacity or providing for new growth, that's what impact fees are restricted to. So that, so that's why, you know, that, that's, that's kind of the caveat with that fund, as you collect that. As we talk about the, the water portion of the Dallas Street project, Shreveport to Jefferson is on there. The Thompson offsite facilities will be there. And then we're going to get started on that wastewater treatment plant at the Mantua development. So that, we've got some money in there and getting that kicked off to get going.
And to go back to that original chart, that impact fee that you saw was just four is two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. That number will continue to grind over the next three to four years. I think pops out right now, I projected about six fifty homes in a year.
Yep.
So that number climbs considerably, which will be very helpful.
If, if the new rate is past six hundred and fifty homes, it'd be about five million dollars, so, for new projects. So that, that's kind of, yeah, that's great, that's coming in, that's going to help, but that's new growth. So just always, if I haven't said it enough, just kind of make sure you know the caveat. Any other questions about the impact fee fund? Discussions and questions?
I just had a question on my, back on credit card fee. I was just curious, this back in eighteen, it was twenty thousand and then it dropped twenty bit. We don't have less people using credit cards, I'm sure. Was there a reason it dropped?
Yeah, I would want to go back and look at those before we answer. I would not imagine.
Are we going to be in a system where we don't have to go outside of our own, take a page, you know, pre-directure? Right now, to, where is it?
PayPal. It goes PayPal. I have to look into it.
It goes to our software render.
Personally, as a consumer, if you told me, I'm just going to have to pay more to use a charge card? No thinking.
I know, it's convenience.
So we've, we've got to find another.
Or auto-drafting me that even out of bank accounts, things like that, that's what you get asked about a lot. I mean, everything I do is auto-drafting.
If you pay online, but you, you do pay a fee, the credit card fee that, that you see in the budget is for folks that come in and pay in the office or call and pay us over the phone.
Oh, because I was going to say, we're going to pay something online when we do it.
Yeah.
Because it goes to the little.
The days of writing a check and getting it off are.
Yeah.
On the, on the police department, on municipal court, municipal court does charge a fee. There's a fee included to use a credit card.
I think you're referring to the online payment situation where you're talking about there's walking in.
Maybe one's gone down where people using online payment.
Yeah, possibly.
Me? Where do you hold it?
Okay, thank you all for the massive amount of work. And it's an exercise that I don't think anybody one of those decked like how much, unless you prepare a budget before and did kind of within it. Thanks to the entire staff. We never have as much money as we need, but it is in our money and we have to marshal it to do this part. Anybody? We have a matter four which is considered a big and necessary warning to propose a twenty nineteen pocket tax rate set upon the period of the day.
I would like to make a motion to propose a tax rate of zero five five eight four four five six dollars per hundred, which is a little over fifty, six dollars. A value for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, tax year twenty nineteen, and set two public hearings. First public hearing will be Tuesday, September tenth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty P M. Second public hearing will be Monday, September sixteenth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty P M. Over at the Madison City Hall located at one fifty-two Belt Main Drive. The final vote on the proposed, proposed tax rate should take place on Thursday, September nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty P M at the Van Alston City Hall.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, any further description? All effects, say, call the board.
We get to see a lot of each other.
Yeah, so just call upon each person and hear their vote.
Uh, I'm good. Please, all four. If this time, we're going to burn it.